Oh, Blas.
They'll give you.
Going out.
Calling to order the December fourth, two thousand twenty-four city council meeting. Please stand and we will say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just so you know, our city clerk is joining us via Zoom this evening. You will see the agenda on the screen and you'll see a picture of our city clerk Karen Robinson in the upper right-hand corner. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hood.
Here.
Councilmember Luth. I'm sorry, I didn't hear her.
I'm here.
Thank you. Councilmember Hood.
Here.
Councilmember Luther.
Uh, here.
Councilmember Norris.
Here.
Councilmember Patel.
Here.
Councilmember Sutel.
Here.
Councilmember Listen.
Here.
See.
Okay, we have all eight council members present. Next item on the agenda would be the agenda approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve tonight's agenda. Any changes?
Mayor, I'm sorry. I may need you to announce who's making those motions because.
A motion was made by councilmember Hood, seconded by councilmember Norris.
Thank you.
Agenda approval. Any changes? Allegiance? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Tonight's agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is public comments. First, we have Mr. Mike Pinson. Please come forward.
Thank you. Mike Pinson, one-one-four-two-zero, old St. Charles Road. And I just want to bring it to the council's attention, they're very anxious about this, but the demolition crew moved into Kmart, I believe it started this morning, which is good. And then I want to mention another neighbor of that, El Morello, is doing great. And most important thing about that is, this is one of the few businesses that I've seen come into Bridgeton that's for Bridgeton residents. I know we have a Hispanic community in Overland and also St. Anne, but yet it's just limited to Bridgeton, which is good. Now, the other thing that I want to share is, I'm an early riser. And by that, I mean, I get up early, feed, take my breakfast, and then I take my dog for a walk. So this is what I'm wearing when I go for a walk. I put this on, button it up, and trying to get across my street to walk through Worthington Double T. Now, it even goes a step further in that I put this on because traffic is a little dangerous coming through there. And I'll have this on with that light working. And you would think that with this working, traffic would stop. No. So now, what I also have, and I didn't want to bring that tonight, is that I have a bat in my hand, in this hand, and a leash in this hand, just trying to get across the street. Traffic does not stop. So anyway, that's all I want to do, share with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pinson. Next person, Mr. Jay Cohen, attorney at law.
Thank you, Mayor Heine. Yeah, Jay Cohen, attorney, sixteen hundred South Brentwood Boulevard, Brentwood, Missouri, six-three-one-four-four. I'm here tonight along with Erin Sandstone of Title Wave Car Wash. In the event when the council reaches item J on the agenda, if or should any council members have any questions about that item, the special use permit extension request.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes.
Move for approval of the minutes of the November twentieth council meeting.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded for approval of the November twenty-twentieth council meeting minutes. Councilmember Luke. Yes. Go ahead, Karen.
Karen, it was Luke.
And Luther.
Motioned, and Luther seconded.
Thank you. I believe councilmember Iwanu to abstain because she was not present at that meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple changes that I found. On line fifty-one, I believe the word "more" should be inserted so that it reads, "He advised that there were more people in attendance." On line fifty-four, spelling of the word "Scott." On page four, lines one-fifty-five and one-fifty-six, I believe those should read, "Council members Sutel and Washi does not concur and votes aye."
Correct.
On line one-seventy-three, councilmember Luke should read, "Council member Luther." On line one-seventy-four, councilmember Luther should read, "Council member Luke." And then finally, on line one-ninety-eight, it says, "Approved by five-two failed." I don't believe the wording for that is correct. Should it just say, "Five-two failed," like line one-sixty-two does? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, line fifty-one, I think we catch what you said there.
Sure. Line fifty-one, I believe it should read, "He advised that there were more people in attendance than expected."
That is? Okay.
And then I have one other question, please, Mayor.
Yes.
On one, did you follow the fifty-six? Any idea how that is? Is what councilmember Gretchen referencing? Is that correct what she's stating?
Well, yeah, I wasn't here. I think what should have happened is that I assume that councilmember Sutel found as a matter of fact that there would be no adverse effect on fire, safety, traffic, character of the neighborhood, general welfare of the community, the five factors, and his vote was aye.
Actually, if I may, I was the one who read this bill and started it off with a nay.
Right, so.
Okay.
That's, that's, I mean, I understand that from what's here.
Sorry.
In order to vote aye on a special use permit, you have to find that all five of those factors are satisfied. So, there should, I don't know if this happened, but there should have been a finding of fact by whomever was voting aye first, and I take it that's Mr. Sutel, that there was no adverse effect upon those five conditions. And then, if Mr. Washi voted after Mr. Sutel, then it would have been appropriate for Mr. Washi to have concurred with Mr. Sutel and voted aye. And then, if Ms. Patel voted after Mr. Washi, then she would have said presumably, "I concur with Mrs. Luke," or Ms. Luke, and vote nay. And, but each person who votes has to, so, so I don't know if that happened or not, but that's the way it should have happened.
That is my recollection as to what happened.
Okay.
Councilmember Sutel.
Yes, I do see the order, and the order's not in the order that it happened. I know for a fact Mr. Washi voted before I voted on that item. Obviously, Luke started off with this, okay, and it didn't jump right to Washi and stuff because of the roll call. But I think what we end up saying, we can listen to the video as well, is that we did not concur with the way it was said, and we voted aye. So we didn't, since we did not.
Yeah, and that's, you know.
Language I think we were instructed to be able to say.
Yeah, as a practical matter, doesn't matter because it failed.
Correct.
Technically, I mean, next time we do this, what we should do is, if you want, whomever the first person is who intends to vote aye, should have an affirmative set of findings of fact and find as a fact that the proposed use will have no adverse effect on the health, safety, morals, general welfare, and so on. So, you know, like I said, I don't think it's material in terms of the action that was taken at the meeting because it failed. And there were only two aye votes as I read this, but that's, I think that's why it's probably confusing in the minutes.
Well, should we also follow the order of the votes?
Ideally.
It would make sense because then you can say who actually concurred with.
Yeah, and I don't know what the order of the votes was. So, I mean, you could, I suppose, table the minutes and watch the video and then come back next meeting and seek approval of the minutes. Again, I don't think it's material, but that would be the right way.
Is there a motion to table the minutes? I hear none. Okay.
All the other changes I believe I understood. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Luke, I'm sorry.
You're welcome.
All right. All in favor of the amendments proposed by councilmember Luke? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye as amended.
Okay, all in favor, I did say amended minutes that she proposed, so. Tonight's minutes as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, we need a motion. Motion for approval as amended.
Okay.
Motion for approval as amended.
Second.
Okay, motion made by councilmember Luther, seconded by councilmember Luke for the approval of the amended minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. The minutes are approved. Okay, next item on the agenda. We don't have any appointments, presentations, proclamations. Next item is going to be consideration of a resolution, R-24-04, councilmember Luther.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for consideration of resolution number R-24-04.
Second.
Motion is made by councilmember Luther, seconded by councilmember Luke for the reading and approval of resolution twenty-four-04. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Continue.
A resolution establishing a six-month moratorium on the issuance of liquor licenses by the drink for new tavern or saloon establishments within the municipal limits of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri. I move for passage of resolution number R-24-04.
Second.
Motion is made by councilmember Luther, seconded by councilmember Luke for passage of resolution R-24-04. We need roll call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have.
Mayor, is that councilmember Sutel?
Councilmember Sutel.
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
I just need to know the name of the city clerk.
Roll call vote, please.
Uh, councilmember He.
Aye.
Councilmember I.
Aye.
Councilmember Luke.
Aye.
Councilmember Luther.
Aye.
Councilmember Norris.
Aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
Councilmember Sutel.
Nay.
Thank you. Councilmember Washi.
Nay.
Thank you. Aye to.
By a vote of five, six to two, the resolution twenty, R-24-04 passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda. We're going to recess for a public hearing on the proposed twenty-two-five annual budget. Mr. Bookell.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get started, I just wanted to take a minute to thank the department heads and their staff, as well as Christine, for their work on this budget. I know they started in July, August, and have been working diligently since that time. I also want to thank the mayor and the council for their review and our budget meetings that we've had on this. I know there's been a lot of work put into it, so I just wanted to thank everybody. The proposed annual budget for the city of Bridgeton for twenty-two-five is thirty-one million, eight-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty dollars. Of that, the general fund is twenty million, four-hundred thousand. This also includes a three-and-a-half percent COLA for the full-time employees. The pension plans, as you all know, we've got two plans. We've got the legacy pension and also loggers. Right now, we've got ninety employees that are part of the loggers plan and forty employees that are part of the legacy pension plan. One point four million is for the legacy plan, and there's a six-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-dollar annual contribution for the loggers plan. The anticipated unreserved fund balance for the end of twenty-two-five is going to be ten-point-eight million dollars, which equates to a fifty-point-eight percent general fund unreserved balance, which, as we've talked before, is very healthy. Manpower for the city of Bridgeton in this proposed budget, there's two additional positions that have been talked about. The, if approved, the full-time employees would go from one-twenty-nine to one-hundred-and-thirty-one full-time employees. This budget also includes a proposed capital budget for the departments of one million, three-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand, and two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And real quick on the property tax included is a fourteen-point-eight percent per one-hundred-dollar assessed valuation for residential and a twenty-point-nine cents for one-hundred dollars of assessed valuation for residential, excuse me, for commercial. I'll entertain any questions that you all may have.
Questions? I see none. Thank you, Mr. Bookell.
All right.
And of course, if anybody has any questions between now and the second consideration later in December, please contact Kevin or Christine or myself, and we'll be happy to go through it with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, permits waivers. Public, does anybody want to come forward and speak in favor of the proposed budget? I see none. Anybody want to come and speak in opposition to proposed budget? Please come forward. I see none. Public hearings closed. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, the special use permit extension for ten-eight-twenty-five St. Charles Rock Road, councilmember Luther.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to extend the special use permit for one year at one-zero-eight-two-five St. Charles Rock Road.
Second.
Motion's made by councilmember Luther, seconded by councilmember Luke for the extension of a special use permit at ten-eight-twenty-five St. Charles Rock Road. Any discussion? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Special use permit extension is passed by a vote of eight to nothing. Thank you. We have no emergency legislature, legislation, contracts, or bids. Next item is perfection of bills. First is bill number sixty-four-six-six for second consideration. Councilmember Luther.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading of bill number sixty-four-six-six.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded for second consideration of bill number sixty-four-six-six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Continue.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached heretofore with Integra Inc. for the lobby reception area upgrades and council dais replacement project in an amount of one-hundred-seventy-three-thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. The project budget includes a twenty-five percent contingency in the amount of forty-three-thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Move that bill number sixty-four-six-six become ordinance number.
Twenty-four-50.
Thank you. Twenty-four-50.
Motion, second?
Second.
Motion's made by councilmember Luther, seconded by councilmember Luke for bill number sixty-four-six-six to become ordinance twenty-four-50. Discussion, councilmember Luke.
Yeah, so I do have a question, but also I'm looking back at the minutes because, correct me if I'm wrong, but hadn't we used fifty? Number fifty? Yeah, we did. Bill sixty-four-six-four became ordinance number twenty-four-50.
Okay. Ms. Robinson.
She sent an email update this afternoon.
Yes, one, I apologize.
Okay.
Fifty-one. Should I?
Let me, let me back up. So make a motion that bill number sixty-four-six-six become ordinance twenty-four-50? One, fifty-one.
Fifty-one.
Okay.
Would you like, yeah, move that bill number sixty-four-six-six become ordinance number twenty-four-51.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that bill number sixty-four-six-six become ordinance twenty-four-51. Discussion. Councilmember Luke, you still have a floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just, I'm curious about the cost difference from what was originally budgeted and planned for this. In the twenty-two-four budget, the lobby was planned for one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars and the dais for thirty-four-thousand dollars, for a total of one-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand dollars. And now, with the twenty-five percent contingency, we're looking at two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand dollars, sub, two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand, four-hundred-and-six dollars, a difference of sixty-eight-thousand, four-hundred-and-six dollars. So I was just curious if we could get an update from Mr. Gunn about the cost difference.
Correct.
Mr. Gunn.
As far as looking at the community projects, originally there was one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand budgeted for the lobby improvements, along with thirty-four-thousand for the dais. So you add those two numbers together to get one-eighty-four. The next bill we have had to do with the streetlights or the LED streetlights, that was budgeted for one-fifty. It came in at one-seventeen, so we had a savings of thirty-two-thousand dollars. And that was all part of the community projects grant, so we can use that thirty-two thousand and apply that to the lobby. The reason why we're using the twenty-five percent contingency is because we don't have an exact idea of how everything was built in there. Plus, we had some changes on the overall concept. Instead of doing like a rectangle or like a kind of an octagon shape, we went with more of a triangle shape, and that increased the size of the projects. We had a little bit of scope creep there. But the reason why it was a little bit higher contingency is just because on a small project like this, once we get into the demo part of it, we don't have to stop and wait for another change order. So we went ahead and after discussions with the architect, raised it up to twenty-five thousand, or twenty-five percent contingency.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sutel.
I didn't push my button, sorry.
Okay. Councilmember Luther.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So if, could I just ask for a high-level view of what the dais reconfiguration, what the upgrades will be? No, we don't have to go into huge detail. Are we talking about tearing everything out here or just some?
Right now, you have on the dais, the council desk is just like a pressed particle board, and it's got a very loose, thin laminate over it. And over the years, that laminate's coming apart. It's either tearing people's shirts, pants up as they get snagged on it. So basically, we're going to change that type of material to the same type that's up on top. You see, it's one piece. It's that kind of granite top, and it looks kind of like a polished marble almost. It'll be synthetic, but it will be just like the top that you have up here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Roll call vote.
Sorry, we couldn't hear you.
If she voted, I didn't hear her.
We didn't hear you.
Councilmember Luther?
Oh, aye.
Thank you.
She's going in and out.
Speak into the mic.
I'm sorry.
Who was the next person?
Karen, when you turn your head, we can't hear you.
I don't know what happened.
We can hear you when you just speak straight, when you're looking straight.
Okay, I'm sorry. I don't know what happened, but, um, councilmember Norris.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
Councilmember Sutel.
Aye.
Councilmember Washi.
Aye.
Councilmember Hood.
Aye.
Councilmember Iwanu.
Aye.
Councilmember Luke.
Aye.
Thank you.
By a vote of eight to nothing, bill number sixty-four-six-six becomes ordinance twenty-four-51. Next item on the agenda, second consideration of bill number sixty-four-six-seven, councilmember Luther.
Thank you, Mayor. Move that, move for second reading of bill number sixty-four-six-seven.
Second.
Motion is made by councilmember Luther, seconded by councilmember Luke for second consideration of bill number sixty-four-six-seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached heretofore with Gersner Electric Inc. for the installation of LED street signs in an amount of ninety-four-thousand, eighty-eight dollars. The project budget includes a twenty-five percent contingency in the amount of twenty-three-thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars. Move that bill number sixty-four-six-seven become ordinance number twenty-four-52.
Second.
Motion is made by councilmember Luther, seconded by councilmember Luke that bill number sixty-four-six-seven becomes ordinance twenty-four-52. Discussion. Councilmember Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. So we're voting on something that I've not seen any official plans for, for what these are going to look like, how they're going to be installed. Really, no information has been shared with us. What, what started this project? Where did it come from? Right now, I'm inclined to vote no, just because I don't have any information about it. So if anyone can expand and share anything, I'd love to hear it.
Mr. Gunn or Mr. Bookell?
Sure. The LED streetlight signs came out of the community projects. I guess ideas as far as when that money became available. Early on, we got help from MoDOT, and that was an agreement that was passed between the city and MoDOT to go ahead, and we were allowed to hook into their streetlights or their traffic signals for a set amount per year for an extended period of time. So once that got approved, it started with working with their structural engineers. Right now, their signals are brand-new in a sense where they were just installed a couple of years ago. As part of the project manual that was bid out to three selected firms that were pre-approved by MoDOT because this is their structures, we have to use pre-approved MoDOT contractors. Inside of the documents, the contractor that was selected has to provide structural analysis along with all the details of how these signs will be. along with all the details of how these signs will be attached to the MoDOT mast arms. You cannot drill into the mast arms. You cannot weld to them. Basically, you're going to use big straps and that's what adheres the signs to the MoDOT structures. You can't do anything to alter the structure of MoDOT that they have existing right now. So that's going to be depending on how they want to attach them, but they'll use straps. Like you've seen, current MoDOT signs that are sheet metal signs, these are going to be little boxes. On the plans right now or on the display are some examples from another city. Basically, the contractor is to provide the city for approval, how the blank is going to look. Now, that has to also conform with MoDOT standards and MUTCD. So all that has to be approved by several parties before anything is built and constructed.
What is, what is the follow-on cost for maintaining these? You said they're LED. How long do the LED lights last? How much do they cost to replace? What happens if one of them gets broken?
If anything happens, let's say they're, they're hit by a semi that has their bed of their truck up or something or something happens, they get hit by lightning or something, we would be responsible to fix that at the city cost. If we don't react within, I think it's forty-eight hours of MoDOT contacting the city, they will correct it and then bill us.
So what are they going to look like? I mean, I see these examples here, thank you for that, but, I mean, what, are they going to be black and white? Are they going to have, well, I mean, that's a Creve Corps logo. We have multiple Bridgeton logos.
Correct. And all of that has to be submitted to the city for a final review and approval. Basically, there are several options that we can use. You can go with any kind of color configuration, any type of, I guess, detail you want to have as far as logo goes. Now, basically, the width of these signs are going to be twenty-four inches tall. And that here would be the height. So you have to remember that the more detailed that logo gets, the harder it's going to see it be from, or be seen as you're a car driving underneath it or as you get close to it. The letters themselves, it's going to depend on, the size will depend on what you wanted to say. I think this was City of St. Peters or St. Charles, they kind of went with two lines. Creve Corps obviously just went with one line of Olive Boulevard or Fifi Road along with their, their kind of a simple logo. It's just their Broken Heart logo on it. So it really depends on what the, what the council or the city decides on finalizing, but it all has to be submitted to us by the contractor.
Is there a reason to vote on this tonight prior to having an actual design?
Yes, because it's all on the contractor to provide this. The contractor's not going to do free work unless he has a contract in hand.
Councilmember Luther?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to ask that City Council reviews and approves the layout for the new signs.
Okay. That's fine.
Councilmember Wishy?
So I'm a big fan of stuff failing safe. And one question I do have about this is, like, right now at the community center, we have a bunch of LED lights above the pool that are going to be fixed, but they don't fail safe. Those fail dark. So let's pretend that we have this sign out on St. Charles Rock Road and hail hits it, a truck hits it, I guess a truck, abnormal sign, but something, the driver goes out on it, which could totally happen being exposed to the elements. Is it going to be legible at night still? Or is it going to be something that you're not going to be able to see because it's not a reflective material like it was before? And the other question will be, is what's going to happen if we end up having a LED driver start flashing? I'm sure we've all seen LED lights on streets before where the driver starts going out it and turns into a strobe light. I know IHOP on St. Charles Rock Road had that happening for about a month before it was fixed to where it's going on and off multiple times a second. Is there any warranty or anything on these lights to where that's going to be covered? Thankfully, for the Bridgeton indoor pool, we're being helped because of a warranty. But for something like this, being exposed to the elements, I have some concerns, even though they look great. If this could be a financial burden later on. So I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, I'm just curious. Thank you.
All right. Lot of questions there. The warranty period on the LED and its equipment is five years from the date of installation. The lifespan should be at least sixty thousand loom hours. So that's, that's a lot of time there. Basically, we used three approved contractors from MoDOT. Those three contractors have done these projects all over the state. Jeff City, St. Louis, St. Charles, St. Louis County. So that's the reason why MoDOT, when we were going through the list of people, we chose these three contractors. The materials and products that we're using were all pre-approved by MoDOT and they've been using these throughout St. Louis. And that's why if you look at these examples like Creve Corps, St. Peters, St. Charles, that's the material that we have in our spec or the one, our materials have already been used in those like projects.
Quick follow-up off that, and again, not trying to like make it sound like I'm trying to come down on this or anything because they do look great at other cities. I just know financial burden stuff could sometimes come up, kind of like the, uh, uh, streetlight we have down the road here. You said we have forty-eight hours to fix it if something does go wrong. Will the warranty be honored in forty-eight hours? I know I've been waiting over a week for our motherboard to be replaced from manufacturer warranty. So are we going to be having to keep extras on hand so we can fix it within forty-eight hours? Or is it something to where the manufacturer of these lights will end up honoring that warranty and give us a replacement within forty-eight hours?
I was just going to say, I can't speak on the warranty. I, I can tell you that I was part of a great streets project in West County fifteen years ago that installed these along Manchester Road. And I'm not aware of any of those having issues to date. I can certainly check with those cities and find out if any of those have been replaced. But they're lighted signs. It's really an enhancement to our retail quarter. I think we've, we've picked the four main intersections that run from essentially the Rock Road and two-seventy out to seventy. I think it'll, it'll certainly be much brighter and, and look a lot nicer than what we've got. Certainly, maintenance is, can be an issue, but I'm not aware of those in the last fifteen years along Manchester Road of, of going out at all. And I, and I see them on a regular basis and they still look good fifteen years later. So I think certainly it could be a chance. I think it's probably a slim chance that we would have to change those out.
Awesome. Thank you.
Councilmember Norris?
Yes, I said, you know, these decisions on this list has been vented at least two years ago. I said, I'm sure. And then, of course, they have upgraded their LED and I do have to, I frequent Manchester Road and these lights are great, especially for our main corridors, especially when you have visitors come in. So, you know, if other cities have done it, and I said Manchester, it's fifteen years ago, I think as technology has improved, I think we're going into, uh, these products are probably better than the ones in Manchester. So I don't think we're going to have a problem. And again, these were decisions that were made with the extra COVID and they were already vetted and people have gone through those. So I think this is an opportunity. You know, they're, they're just an extended streetlight, uh, street sign of, over the, uh, over the street and there's lights going in. So when you're, especially when it's raining, I tell you, they're fabulous. I said, so if people are going, so I, I don't understand the situation. I know some have not been here, but again, our people have already vetted this and they're not going to go with, and, and you know, MoDOT and Ameren's not going to put up anything that's not approved by their contractors. So that's all I got to say. I think that's a great idea and I thought that was a great opportunity for us to have some, especially when we're having visitors, uh, trying to find locations.
Councilmember Sattell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'm definitely in favor of this because this is a, uh, an excellent way to market our city, especially we make sure we put the right, a logo on there that represents the City of Bridgeton. So, I mean, favorite, I think, my only question, I want to make sure, you know, like, you know, Kathy brought up as far as making sure this comes back to council for us to look at what, what it is. I like the idea of it just being one single line, as much letters you can see, as big as letters, instead of the double lines on there. I don't think we worry about the block of this, you know, this numbered block like you see some of the other cities on there. But having the logo on there is really important, just like you see on, on all those areas on Manchester Road and over in Creve Corps. So I, I think we need to start really using that as a big marketing tool on our Rock Road corridor. And I think it's also a safety issue when you, you know, you travel this, you know, I know when I'm out snowplowing in the middle of the night, sometimes it's like you can hardly read anything out there. Okay, so this will be a big help on that Rock Road corridor, you know, when you got snow because a lot of that kind of sticks on our abnormal signs, you know, you can't even read the sign at all. It's just white. So this here, well, I mean, you know, it doesn't really generate, LED doesn't generate really a heat, but it, it will, should still light up and I think that'd be very beneficial along, just as long as we get to bring back and, and get to take a look at it as a final council decision on, on how they're going to be made up and the colors and stuff. Thank you.
Councilmember Hood?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that this is something that was brought up from the very beginning for, with the Beautification Commission for the city so that we could dress up our entrances. So these were discussed back when we were talking about mowing and everything else. So I am definitely looking forward to this.
Councilmember Patel?
Thank you, Mayor. I do, I have seen these lights, as I frequent West County as well quite often, and I have seen these. And it does elevate the city and I do think that they look really, really nice and they do upgrade a city's look. Having said that, I would, I concur with Councilwoman Luther. I would like to see the plans for this, to just see how exactly they would look. And also, how, how many lights are we talking about with this dollar amount? And Robert, you had mentioned that MoDOT would be the ones to take care of this? If they do, if they're defective or they break and the concern is with that, I would hope that they would take care of it, but we can't even get them to mow the grass half the time. So how do we know that they're going to come and fix these lights? So that would just be a concern of mine.
Councilmember Luther?
Yeah, mine's a quick question. So I know this has been discussed for a while. So the funding for this is coming directly out of our budget or was this allocated from funds that we received? It's a, I wasn't clear on that.
It's coming out of our budget and it started with that community projects grant. So I'm not too sure exactly the dollars. That might be more of a Christine question. But so as far as the money comes from, very early on, it was budgeted for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the community projects list.
Okay. Thank you.
And as far as the other questions go, there's four intersections. Each intersection, each intersection gets four signs. You get sixteen signs. When I say MoDOT's going to fix them, no, they're going to bring a contractor, one of their preferred three contractors is going to be tasked to do that. And trust me, they'll come out there and charge you overtime if need be. They'll be out within an hour probably. As far as if anything does fail, remember now, those are all streetlights or, excuse me, signals, signalized intersections. We're tapping into the MoDOT powered to power these LED lights. So if the signals go out, they're battery backup. So we have a little bit of battery backup from them to run the LED signs. Worst-case scenario, it's in the specs that MoDOT helped us write. They have, they have to have a three M diamond grading and that's the sheeting on the outside of the sign so you could still see it even if you don't have power. So it will be, either the letters will be the three M sheeting or the outside background will be the sheeting part of it. But you'll be able to see this with or without light.
Thank you.
Councilmember Iwannu?
Yes, I just want to say I, I stand in agreement with my colleagues and that this is a excellent concept in addition to our community adds a vitality and recognition, especially on our retail corridor and as we're going to be gaining more tourism.
I'm sorry, they want to speak in, I can't hear.
Speak into the mic.
Hi. I just said that I am in agreement with my colleagues here that this would be an asset to our community and that it would bring vitality and recognition and be of benefit, especially in our retail corridor. And I am in agreement with Ms. Luther that I would ask that City Council have the final review and be a part of the review and approval process before the actual order takes place.
Any further questions? Mr. Gunn?
I have one. Yes.
Are the lights on twenty-four hours a day?
It depends on what MoDOT wants. We're having discussions with them. In the specs, it says that the contractor is to provide a photo cell that meets requirements from MoDOT. Talking with MoDOT, they really don't like to use photo cells because it's one more thing that can go out. LED lights do not use that much power at all. So they don't have a problem with us in the project or the cost that was already pre-approved by council and MoDOT is with these lights being on twenty-four hours a day. So if we add that photo cell, it's going to be at a higher cost to us and we already haven't agreed on price for electricity. So we're not going to save anything if we do add a photo cell because their money has already been calculated using LED lights twenty-four hours a day.
Okay. My question prompted another one. Councilmember Wishy?
So going off of that, I believe you said the quoted lifetime for these LEDs is sixty thousand hour, uh, sixty thousand hours. So take that, divide by twenty-four, divide that by three sixty-five. We're showing that this should last us just under seven years. So at seven years, are we going to have to spend up to a hundred and seventeen point six thousand dollars again? Or what's going to happen at that point?
Remember, the majority of this, of this money here is for the box. It's for the plastic sign that goes in front of it, all the labor to install that, all the hangers. Along with, they have to provide, the contractor must provide MoDOT, the wiring details, because we don't have anything as far as how they're going to splice into it. It's up to the contractor to bring an electrical engineer out, draw up the plans and run that through. If you remember, our sign out here for City Hall is all LED. We had a power surge a little while ago and it was, I think, maybe five hundred dollars to replace the guts of LED lights. LED lights and the controllers or the step-down transformer, very inexpensive.
Okay. Thank you.
I see no more questions. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye. Sorry.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Sattell?
Aye.
Councilmember Wishy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Iwannu?
Aye.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
By a vote of eight to nothing, bill number sixty-four sixty-seven becomes ordinance twenty-four dash fifty-two. Next item on the agenda is consideration of new bills. Bill number sixty-four sixty-eight. Councilmember Luther?
Thank you, Mayor. Move for first reading of bill number sixty-four sixty-eight.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke for first consideration of bill number sixty-four sixty-eight. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Proceed.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached hereto with Wireless USA for the new access control system in an amount of seventy-one thousand five hundred thirty-five dollars and eighty-six cents. The project budget includes a twenty percent contingency in the amount of fourteen thousand three hundred seven dollars and eighteen cents. Move to table, bill sixty-four sixty-eight.
Second.
Okay. Before we vote on that motion, the city attorney would like to say some words.
I just had a quick question. There's, there's no contract attached to the bill. Will that be, we'll need to amend this bill at the next meeting to attach that?
Okay. We can, we can do that. It's, it's the same contract we always use, no changes from the one you've approved in the past. We can put it in there and amend it.
Just the vendor form?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. We'll just need to get it attached.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Motion is made to table, bill number sixty-four sixty-eight by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Bill number sixty-four sixty-eight is tabled. Next item, first consideration, bill number sixty-four sixty-nine. Councilmember Luther again.
Thank you, Mayor. Move for first reading of bill number sixty-four sixty-nine.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke for first consideration of bill number sixty-four sixty-nine. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Proceed.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, adopting a budget for the twelve-month period commencing January one, twenty-twenty-five and ending December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five in the amount of thirty-one million eight hundred thirty-five thousand five hundred and twenty dollars for all funds with operational expenditures of twenty-five million six hundred and six thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars, debt service expenditures of two million three hundred and forty thousand and fifty-five dollars, and capital improvement and tax in... debt service expenditures of $2,345,55, and capital improvement and tax increment financing expenditures of $3,888,990. Move to table, Bill Number 6469.
Second?
Motion made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke, to table, Bill Number 6469. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Bill Number 6469 is tabled. Next item, first consideration, Bill Number 6470. Councilmember Patel?
Thank you, Mayor. Move for first reading of Bill 6470.
Second?
Motion is made by Councilmember Patel, seconded by Councilmember Hood, for first consideration of Bill Number 6470. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Proceed.
An ordinance repealing Ordinance 23-53, and adopting a new ordinance fixing the salaries of certain special service and salaried employees, as denoted in the city charter for fiscal year 2025. Move to table, Bill 6470.
Second?
Motion is made by Councilmember Patel, seconded by Councilmember Luther, to table, Bill Number 6470. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Bill Number 6470 is tabled. Next item is first consideration of Bill Number 6471. Again, Councilmember Patel.
Thank you, Mayor. Move for first reading of Bill 6471.
Second?
Motion is made by Councilmember Patel, seconded by Councilmember Iwannu, for first consideration of Bill Number 6471. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Continue.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, repealing Ordinance Number 24-24, and adopting a new ordinance fixing the salaries and other compensation of the classified employees of the city as provided for, in Section 8.04 of the Charter and Section 115 of the Code of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, for the fiscal year 2025. Move to table, Bill 6471.
Second?
Motion is made by Councilmember Patel, seconded by Councilmember Iwannu, to table, Bill Number 6471. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Bill Number 6471 is tabled. Next item is first consideration of Bill Number 6472. Councilmember Luther?
Thank you, Mayor. Move for first reading of Bill Number 6472.
Second?
Motion is made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke, for first consideration of Bill Number 6472. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Proceed.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement, in the form substantially attached hereto, with International Cybernetics Company LP DBA IMS Infrastructure Management Services for Pavement Analysis and Asset Management Inventory, in an amount of $45,655. The project budget includes an additional 10% contingency, in the amount of $4,565.50. Move to table, Bill Number 6472.
Second?
Motion is made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke, to table, Bill Number 6472. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Bill Number 6472 is tabled. Next item, first consideration, Bill Number 6473. Again, Councilmember Luther?
Thank you, Mayor. Move for first reading of Bill Number 6473.
Second?
Motion is made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke, for first consideration of Bill Number 6473. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Proceed.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement, in the form substantially attached hereto, with CDG Engineers, Inc., in the amount of $428,997.37, for professional design services associated with the natural bridge, road, bridge replacement. Move that bill, move to table, Bill Number 6473.
Second?
Motion is made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke, to table, Bill Number 6473. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Bill Number 6473 is tabled. Next item, we have no discussion items. Attorney's report is next.
I have nothing to report, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Council Communications, I will start with Councilmember Hood this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to see if the Committee for Council Rules could meet at 6:00 PM on the 18th, before our next meeting. So if anyone has any issues with that, can't make it, please get ahold of me after the meeting, and we'll try to come up with a better solution. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Norris?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind, there's a tree lighting Friday night, December the 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00. Santa and Mrs. Santa Claus and a reindeer, not a real reindeer, but a reindeer, will be there. Cookies, hot chocolate, and crafts, so bring your children and your grandchildren. And also, I want to remind all on this Business Committee, look at your calendar for January the 15th. I would like to start something to see what we can get together and see what we can handle on the Business Committee, Community. We need communication. So, it's myself as chairman, Kathy Luther, Kathy Iwanni, I'm sorry, Kathy.
Just call me Kathy.
And Mr. Weschi, so if you can do that. I'm sorry, I said I go. So anyway, that's the, who I need on the committee, so 5:30 on January the 15th, please. And also, I just would like a question, when is the comprehensive study supposed to be finished? Do you have any idea? And then, do we have a personnel study started, or we have to get an ordinance for that? So I just would like to see these studies provided before we make some other decisions. So, I just need to ask that. So, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Luke?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hood, yes, I am available, I can tell you that right now, for the 18th. Let's see. So last night, my water pressure was low, and I got on social media and saw that some other people's was low as well. I called Missouri American Water, and just, I want to give a shout-out to them, that, for those of us who did call, they gave us a call back to let us know, to give us an update of what was going on. So I really appreciate their good customer service there. And then, I also have a resident, another resident shout-out. This time, a photographer in Ward 3, a resident in Ward 3 is also a photographer, and he put together a nice little booklet, it's a calendar, he's selling them, but we already have calendars for Bridgeton, so I'm not going to tell that. But I just wanted to show, I mean, just how nice some of his pictures are, let's see if I can find my favorite one. It's kind of funny. I don't know if you can all see this. Little funny-looking bird. Anyway, shout-out to Alex in Ward 3 for his photography. He captures some of the owls that we have back in Hickory Woods, so, that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Luther?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, first, thank everyone for coming tonight. Thank you for being here and supporting us and supporting your city. We mentioned the December 6th lighting, tree lighting. Last year it rained. I remember it rained a lot, so hopefully it's going to be cold, but it was really fun to be inside, and I, I have it on good word that someone sitting to my left may be serving as Mrs. Claus. I'm not sure. So, I guess that means you could actually...
You've been misinformed. And it's not me.
So, I'm sorry, I spilled, I spilled the beans there. And then, I want to thank Council, Councilmember Hood for, for the Rules, Council Rules Committee, and also for Councilwoman Norris, for firing up the Business and Community Partnership Subcommittee. Just wanted to mention that our next Ward 3 meeting will be January 22nd at 6:30 PM, so, and wishing you all a very happy and Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, if we don't see each other before Christmas.
Thank you. Councilmember Patel?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilperson Hood, January 18th is good for me, so...
December the 18th.
December 18th, yeah, that's good for me. And, that's all I have. Thank you.
Just live up here. That's all we'll just...
Councilmember Iwannu?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say it's good to be back, and thank you for those who checked in on me. And, I did want to ask, I know the tree lighting celebration is this Friday from 6:00 to 8:00, but what time are we actually lighting the tree?
It's dark at 5:00.
Well, I'll let Brendan cover that when he shrieks.
Okay. And, I've been out knocking on doors in the community in Ward 4, gathering signatures for the April ballot. It's been a tremendous pleasure to get to know the residents and meet everyone.
You need to go to 2. Need to do it in Ward 2, not Ward 4.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It won't help if you were Ward 4.
Certainly won't, but everybody's been lovely. Freudian slip. Well, that's what I say, I want to give a shout-out to Ward 2 for their warm welcome and hospitality, and just a shout-out to everyone in Bridgeton community. I'm so proud of us and what we've done with our big hearts in the Feed the Masses Food Drive, that's just fabulous. And, I'm just proud to be here, and I look forward to serving all of you. Thank you.
Councilmember Settel?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple items here. Are we deciding to have a, about the Council Charter rules, about the judge issue back on the ballot, as so we have a deadline coming up in January, so, you know, if you need to bring that in our next meeting, to have a first reading or something like that, I think that's one of the most important things we need to move forward on before the deadline cuts off, and before we have an issue. This is more of a question, I guess, you know, for Karen, our city clerk. I haven't heard anything about the February legislative meetings they hold in Jeff City, so if we can get some information, if we got to reserve our dates or whatever, but I at least like to get the dates, because I'm trying to set up some operation times, you know, during January or February. And then, the last is, at least, still kind of in favor, I guess, either not having a meeting, or at least a January 8th, next council, a council meeting in January, so maybe, Mayor, you can talk about that. Prefer, I prefer just have the January 8th. I saw some text messages and emails back and forth, some of them saying, you know, citizens deserve two council meetings per month. I kind of agree on that, so maybe we have one in January 8th. I know our city attorney needs to know when to show up and not, so we need to make, probably make a decision on that tonight. And, and go from there. So, other than that, look at everybody, hopefully everybody's looking forward to a happy Merry Christmas later on, start doing your shopping, start spending your money in Bridgeton. Let you all go. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Weschi?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, everybody, for showing up tonight. Always appreciate to see everybody coming out. As far as the 6:00 PM meeting goes, I should be able to make that, I might be a minute or two late, just because of my work schedule. The 5:30 meeting, there is very little chance I would be able to get here at the start of a 5:30 PM meeting. So, I don't know, Councilmember Harris, if, I mean, Norris, if I'll be able to do that.
Get the name right.
Hey, you said Weschi instead of Weschi, I can mess up your name, too.
It's closer. You can come in whenever, you can get there.
Gotcha.
I, I mean, my problem is when we do the 6 o'clock and we're pushing toward the council meeting, I don't like having that 10 minutes. I, I like to have some time if I need to talk to constituents. So, come on in, the first meeting's going to be really just getting a goal, what we're going to do, so...
I, I'll get there as soon as I can, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, let's see what else. Everybody else has talked about the tree lighting, but personally looking forward to that, I know I'm going to be there. I also wanted to make sure people were aware that if you live in an area covered by the Pennville Fire Department, which is most of Bridgeton, I feel like, if you look at their Facebook page, you can actually see the Santa tracker they have, so not only are you going to be able to know when Santa's supposed to be visiting your neighborhood, but there's actually going to be a tracker they have on it, so you can see where he is on the map, which can kind of be nice, because you never know exactly what time they're going to get to your house, because, you know, they're, the fire department helping Santa out, so, calls can come up. Lately, I've had a chance to use the indoor pool quite a few times with my family, and I just wanted to give a call-out to the Parks and Direct team and everybody at the community center. It's always a great operation they have going on up there, and the lifeguards are always lovely there, so, that's great. And, just going off of something that Councilmember Luke ended up saying a few minutes ago about Missouri American Water, if you do not have your phone number registered with them, I recommend going to their website and registering your cell phone number, because they will actually send you text messages if there are any water issues in your area. I know that I've received a few over the years about water main breaks, that way I know that I should be boiling water or something to that end, so, just as a little side note, in case you weren't aware of that. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Staff reports, I'm going to start with Mr. Gunn this evening?
Nothing new to report tonight.
Thank you. Chief?
I have nothing to report, thank you.
And, Mr. Kane, Parks and Rec?
So for the tree lighting event this Friday night, we're shooting for around 6:15 PM to do the actual lighting. And as far as the weather goes, it looks to be in the 30s and dry, which is, which is good. Last year, we had a good turnout, and that was despite it being our first year and some pretty poor weather, so we're expecting a strong turnout, looking forward to it. Feed the Masses Food Drive was also mentioned. This year, we collected 2,958 total items. We shattered the previous record, which was 2,288 back in 2020. Really proud of our community and the residents that, that kind of came together and really did an awesome job donating this year. We finished in second place, which is the highest, that's the best we've ever finished. First place was Maryland Heights, a little bit bigger, a little bit bigger than us. So, second place out of 21 people is really amazing. I talked to people that spent hundreds of dollars at Aldi's and brought tons of stuff up, so whether you donate one can or $200 worth, we really appreciate it, and we finished a lot higher than a lot of cities that are a lot bigger than us, so, pretty cool.
Thank you. Mr. Bookout?
There was a question about the comp plan and the timeline. I just want to let you know that we anticipate that being substantially completed this time next year, November, December of 2025. I know Zach has been engaged with the consultant, and he's been working with them, so if you have any questions about that, feel free to give Zach a call. I did contact one of our, one of my counterpart with one of the municipalities in West County related to those signs, just to ask about maintenance, and as I mentioned, it's been about 15 years, and he said they've not had any maintenance at all with those. And I told him, I think I just jinxed him, so, they'll start having problems. But they've not had to do anything with, with those, and it's been about 15 years with it, which I think is a pretty good track record. That's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor's report. If you don't know, the activity guide is out, it should be mailed to you. If you don't get one in the mail, I guess, look at the rec center, they have them on the shelves up there at the rec center. The banner is in the process of being printed as we speak. Our Economic Development Advisory Commission had their second meeting on Monday, November the 25th. They scheduled an hour, I think it went for about an hour and 20 minutes. I'm still very excited and happy for the commission members, there's a lot of talent there, and I think they're going to bring a lot to the table as far as moving forward. The, I cannot, the Personnel Study, Mr. Bookout didn't address that, but I think we're going to send out a request for proposals, I guess, in the first month of the year, and get that going along, so we can get that finished, hopefully in the first quarter next year. At least, that's my intentions. Regarding the Charter Amendment for the residency requirement for the judge, I believe we're going to have an ordinance together at the next council meeting for first consideration, and second consideration would be the first meeting in January. We need to get that set up, so it's on the ballot. And, at this point, the city administrator and I have talked, and we believe that if we really want to get this passed, we want that to be the one and only ballot issue on the April 1st ballot. Concerning our first meeting in January, Mrs. Robinson, did you get a final count on who wanted to meet on the 2nd and who wanted to meet on the 8th?
Yes, Mayor, I apologize if I didn't get that information to you. I heard from six people, one of them can go with either date, and the dates that they were... six people. One of them can go with either date, and the dates that they were considering are, that were mentioned were the second and the eighth primarily. Um, and I, if I remember correctly, one said that, um, she could go with either date. Three said the eighth. So it's between the second and the eighth.
So it's a tie, I guess, and three for the second, three for the?
That's, that's the way I have it written. It's pretty much a tie.
Okay. Um, I, I would, I'd prefer to, to be the second. So if the mayor breaks the tie, I'm gonna go for the second. Um, if council's in agreement with that.
Can we vote on it?
You want to do a roll call vote? We can do that. We have some discussion first, it looks like. Councilmember Norris?
Yeah, I thought, I thought three of those votes would go either way. I thought they said it's January second or January eighth. So since three went January eighth, I think they should go January eighth. My opinion.
Councilmember Westy?
I was actually gonna say what Councilwoman Norris just said.
Councilmember Sotell?
Yeah, I was following my council, co-council Westy, 'cause I can attend any of them. So I'd rather have the eighth, where we have a full eight if possible.
Okay. It looks like we're gonna do it the eighth. Thank you. Councilmember Norris, small sliders. Uh, they're opening the twentieth of December, and then a grand opening in January. Is that correct?
Right. That's what Mr. Bo told me. Um, he, you know, they're having trouble with getting the electric in, so they have no electric. So they want to open, uh, start flipping burgers on December the twentieth, and then the big party, he said, would be a month later, January twentieth, or twenty-first, or twenty-second. So depending on, of course, you know, their, their, I guess, headquarters are someplace in Atlanta. So, you know, everything has to come together, but that's what he wants. I did indicate the twentieth was a holiday, so I didn't know if he wanted to do that. There could be more people off, but, uh, I guess it just, it's a lot of people to come together. But those, so just block that week of January twentieth. Okay?
All right. I got it. Thank you. Uh, thank you. Yes. Somebody say something? Karen? Yes.
I'm sorry.
We, we can't hear you? We can't hear you?
I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
We can now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry. I don't, I have the charter in front of me, but I believe Councilmember Luke read at the last meeting, meeting, that to change that meeting date, there has to be a vote.
Correct.
That was, that, I didn't think that was an official vote, but I mean, correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
However, you guys want to do it, but that's my understanding. Sorry.
For the January eighth? Do you want me to make a motion?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, I move that our January first city council meeting of the year take place on January eighth.
Second?
Motion is, mo, mo, motion is made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke to change the January first council meeting to the Wednesday, the eighth of January, two thousand twenty-five. And do we need roll call or? All in favor, say aye? Aye.
We need a roll call.
Roll call. Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Iwannu?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear her.
Aye.
Did she say aye?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Sotell?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
By a vote of eight to nothing, the council meeting for January first has been rescheduled to Wednesday, January the eighth. Thank you. Officer Stone, thanks for being with us. And, uh, Ms. Bodas, thank you for your hard work on the budget. Appreciate you being here also tonight. And also, uh, our H R coordinator, Joanna, thank you for being with us and support. And thank you, Karen, for working with us, and, uh, we wish you good health.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion for adjournment.
Second?
Motion is made by Councilmember Luke to adjourn, seconded by Councilmember Luther. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed? I hear none. We're adjourned.